Hi Nancy. I'm gonna go back unmuted. Zoom's becoming a way of life.
Here.
I sound German.
He's muted again.
Okay, there you go.
Okay.
Sorry about that. I thought the host had me unmuted. There I am. I'm unmuted now. At present. Thank you.
So the election is in progress that the call down period is going to be handled in the last week of December this year. We've been going past their deadline. They have to count them out. Well, they were carrying a charter. So we've got to count. They haven't done everything that's there by the end of December. So that's like it's not too big. So and that's during Christmas holiday. And so we'll change it. And then going to see the runoffs. And Wendy, she's the assistant supervisor of the election. And she said that they can't do runoffs for us. And in our new charter, maybe up to past March 2019, that voted voting board says that the Simon was counting Henderson board now and it's all the election. So that means if we have run off, we can't do a whole thing. They have to do it. So it's just taking that out because they have their own way of thinking. Um, there's a couple of other things. My understanding is that we can also get with which crash that we do at that time. One of those commitments that went through the voters asking if they wanted special magistrate to act in the court of justice in the city charter. And that's exactly why we're in Florida. And they turned that one down. It was for the special magistrate to take over the VOA. And they turned that down. Thought it's a matter of changing the language. It's central language in the charter. We need to change that up.
Mayor, if I may. We also need to clean up the auditor selection clause in our charter, which is counter to Florida statutes. I suggest we just take it out. But.
I would like to proffer two inclusion for the workshop. One is on our agenda tonight. It's the cybersecurity protection that we renew semi annually. We haven't had a chance to discuss that. I'd like to pull it from our agenda tonight and discuss it in the workshop. We'll still have time to pass that at the June meeting if we'd like. And then the second item is discussion on the COVID-19 fiscal report and the options that we have available to us. And I'd like to do that at the workshop as well.
And that's something I wanted to discuss. One of that. Yeah, this is the mayor. She said we asked for it before. And I think there's something that we need to discuss on the show. But as I was saying, Joe, and Tommy Swirral, that's others. Discussing the opinion of George, something to be aware of. I don't know how to approach this in any special way.
So someone left you a note on your front door? Okay.
It wants to write an email out to him.
Mr. Mayor, I have a couple items to. One is I think this may go with about COVID-19 fiscal report. I got emails from a resident today that might request our payroll runs in the past three months. I didn't look at it in depth, but what I did is something I think we I know this is administrative function, but I think we can see where our money's been spent. So along with that COVID-19 fiscal report, they'd like to include the payroll runs for the past three months. The other thing is I would like to be city manager to present his findings and his reports of the political activity, alleged political activity, I'm sorry, involved in the city treasurer and the communications here.
Looks like we've got a number of topics here on that workshop. So I like the table or this workshop. Or you can ask somebody to bring it higher up or put it off to the bottom.
Just a point of reference. If you adopt the board handle tonight, this workshop meeting will be on Wednesday. The fourth Wednesday of the month. I don't have the date right in front of me.
So.
Yes. The first charter amendment has posted the cyber security protection COVID-19 fiscal reports and all of the payroll runs for the last three weeks. Was that?
Three months.
Three months, I'm sorry. You know, I got it wrong. That's why we got to go back three days. And then the beach beacon article and finding the of the political activities of our employees.
Just reading this. So we.
Heavenly Father, we pray you for giving us the opportunity to meet together this evening to discuss and discuss matters of common interest and concerns. We acknowledge that self-government is a privilege that not all people in this world enjoy. Help us to use its power and share it with wisely in a way that will conserve the heritage of our generation. And also thank you for this new commission. As we pray.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ralph Brooks is here.
How long is this going to hold on? That we can't get a Zoom. Okay. Thank you. Zoom is great though.
I think that should be.
Yeah.
Mayor Hendricks.
Here.
Vice Mayor Andrews.
Here.
Commissioner Price.
Here.
Commissioner Hodges. Commissioner Dowther. Commissioner Dowther.
Commissioner, can you stay here?
Thank you.
Remove up the agenda. Sheriff, a motion.
Mr. Mayor, if you may, if you'll remove the agenda. The cybersecurity, as I mentioned in our.
And I don't know. I do have a comment about the Gulf Bullford undergrounding that's under the consent agenda. I don't think we need to remove it. But I don't know whether the recent communication we got from the Pinellas County today impacted that.
If I may, I've been speaking with the county administrator off of that. It's a big change somewhat. I still think the option two, which is recommended, is the way to go because the county runs the project. And we'll, you know, we'll probably be spending a lot more money than I think if we do it locally.
Okay, and I just wanted to let our residents know that this is not a discussion about the city spending four million dollars on undergrounding. This is something that has no fiscal impact. And I didn't want anyone who looks at this packet to think that we put such a big project on a consent agenda. That's all I want to say.
Yeah, there's spending for Pinellas money.
Yeah, it's all.
Basically, the office of Mayor has made that selection of option one or two. And then we get the ball rolling and the education part out.
They were going to vote on this at the fix. And myself, as well as some of the other mayors, wanted to bring it back to the commission and get your blessing on it before we voted. So that's why it's on here. Do we do a roll call on this? City clerk, what you call roll?
Vice Mayor Andrews. Commissioner Hodges. Commissioner Price.
Yes.
Commissioner Dowther. Mayor Hendricks.
Yes. Proclamations. Will the city manager please read the proclamations?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the first one is Municipal Clerks Week, May 3rd through the 9th, 2020. Whereas the office of municipal clerk, a time honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world. And whereas the office of municipal clerk is the oldest among public. Can't talk, I'm sorry, public service. And whereas the office of municipal clerk provides a professional link between citizens, the local government bodies, and agencies of government at all levels. Whereas municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all. And whereas the municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community. And whereas municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of municipal clerk through participation in educational programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations. And whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the municipal clerk. Now therefore, I, John V. Hendricks, mayor of the city of Midhur Beach, do recognize the week of May 3rd, who may be done 2020 as Municipal Clerks Week. Congratulations.
Mayor, I would like to say thank you. You've been relentless in doing your job professionally. And I for one, I thank you for all the years you've been here.
I appreciate that, Dylan.
Here.
And I agree too.
Thank you, Ralph.
Go up front and maybe get.
Sure.
Hey, Andrew?
Air is all straight, it looks great. Sure, absolutely.
Just right away right there. Yes. This proclamation is the National Public Works Week, which is May 17th through the 23rd, 2020. The campaign is, it starts here. Whereas public work professionals focus on the infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainability and the resilience of communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of the city of Midhur Beach, Florida. And whereas these infrastructure facilities and services cannot be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals, who are engineers, managers, employees at all levels of government, and private sector, who also are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our national transportation and infrastructure, water supply, water treatment, solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities, essential to our citizens. And whereas it is a public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children of the city of Midhur Beach, Florida to gain knowledge of and maintain a professional progressive interest in understanding the importance of public works, public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year 2020 marks 60th Annual National Public Works Weeks, sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Now therefore, I, John V. Hendricks, mayor of the city of Midhur Beach, Florida, hereby proclaim May 17th to the 23rd, 2020, as National Public Works Week. And we urge all citizens to join with us in promoting our public works department here in the city of Midhur Beach. Congratulations. Public Works Director Jamie Irons will receive the resolution.
That's a cute picture.
We've got two more to correct now. We have any photographs? Our next proclamation is a proclamation for National Safe Voting Week, May 16th through the 22nd. For nearly 90 million Americans, voting continues to be a popular recreational activity. For most who come from everywhere in between, they pour drink into the water and enjoy time together, voting, sailing, paddling, and fishing. During National Safe Voting Week, we want to bring special attention to this past time, remind recreational voters of a few tips to ensure that they and their loved ones are safe and responsible while exploring our nation's waterways. Proper planning for a day of voting begins even before leaving the home. Getting a free vessel safety check, taking a safe voting course at the beginning of voting season, finding a vote of vote point where they trust a family member or friend, and checking the weather before voting are key steps to an enjoyable time voting. Everyone should always wear a U.S. Coast Guard approved life jacket while voting. Crowning remains the number one cause of death for recreational voters each year, and most crawling victims in recreational voting accidents are not wearing a life jacket. Safe and responsible voting includes never operating a boat while under the influence of drugs or alcohol and knowing basic navigation rules. National Safe Voting Week is observed to bring attention to important life-saving tips for recreational voters so that they can have a safer or fun experience out on the water. Whereas, I'm having 700 people die each year in voting-related accidents in the U.S. approximately three fourths of these are fatalities caused by crawling. Whereas the majority of these accidents are caused by human error or poor judgment and not by the boat equipment or environmental factors. And whereas, a significant number of voters who lose their lives by crawling would be alive today had they worn their life jacket. And whereas, in an effort to combat these statistics, National Safe Voting Council, in partnership with the U.S. Coast Guard and the National Association of Safe Voting Law Administrators, will launch the annual North American Safe Voting Campaign during National Safe Voting Week. The campaign is designed to reach more than 70 million voters around North America and communicates this year's life-saving message, vote smart, vote safe, wear it. And now therefore, I, John V. Hendricks, mayor of the city of Midhur Beach, Florida, who hereby support the goals of the North American Safe Voting Campaign, and proclaim May 16th through the 2020 as National Safe Voting Week, and urge all voters to vote smart, vote safe, and wear it. We're playing this 12th day of May, 2020.
Mr. Mayor, my plans are after the proclamation is executed, we'll get to the Coast Guard story. And hopefully next year, at the same time, we'll be able to have one of our community events. Use the theme of waterside communities. And we would always have special events during this particular week. We'd even run a safe voting classes for the youth and adults. We'd also, you know, have displays of boats, some of the Coast Guard vessels and so forth. Just kind of make a day of it. So we'll put that on the plan since we couldn't do it this year. We'll put it on the plan for next year, but it's really another great community day of doing hot dogs, hamburgers, and all that stuff.
Sounds good to spend an unusual year.
Yes.
We have one more to go, sir.
In our last proclamation of the evening, National Marina Days, May 25th through September 7th, 2020, Summer of Giving. Whereas the municipal arena is a service that provides the people of the city of Midhur Beach, Florida, the use of quality of life, marine recreation, and place which would enjoy the waters of the city and surrounding areas. And whereas, National Marina Days, Summer of Giving, is a celebration of voting, community, and giving back. As families search for fun and outdoor activities that everyone can enjoy, the city wants to encourage that, in voting a tribe, while also helping good cause. Existing voters are always ready to celebrate with a day on the water. These days, it doesn't bring town voters, so they share the experience through visiting and utilizing the Midhur Beach Arena. And whereas, now more than ever, Americans need outdoor, safe, family-friendly ways to spend their future time. National Marina Days introduces voting as just such an activity and reminds our existing customers and our community that the Midhur Beach Arena is a local, environmentally friendly, beautiful gateway to on-the-water fun. And whereas this year, 2020, National Marina Days extends from Memorial Day to Labor Day. Now therefore, I, John V. Hendricks, mayor of the city of Midhur Beach, Florida, who hereby proclaim, May 25th through September 7th, 2020, as National Marina Days, and urge all citizens to join with the staff and patrons of the Midhur Beach Arena to enjoy the benefits provided in having a municipal arena and the benefits of our coastal waters to beautiful beaches, getting to boats and other marine craft. In witness thereof, I descend by hand and cause the official seal of the city of Midhur Beach, NOS County, and state of Florida to be a piece of this 12th day of May, 2019. John V. Hendricks, Mayor. Okay, onto the comments. Will the city manager please read any public comments? We have three public comments that have come in by email to the commission. The first came from Jerry Davis, 749 Sunset Cove, here in Midhur Beach, speaking to the issue of parking fees. As a resident and business owner, I am deeply concerned that during a time of crisis, someone in city leadership would even consider this resolution as an option. If the city chooses to raise the parking fees, it will not only discourage people from coming here, but it will also make our city, well, it's obviously taking advantage of already bad situation. Everyone is hurting financially because of this pandemic. Why would we punish people who want to come to our beautiful town because their lives are snowy and had to fall over? There's some people who want to visit, get back to our community, and the small businesses that they love. As a city, you have control over many choices which will impact and affect the success of local businesses. Increasing parking fees is a purport, a completely no more hardly good. And also homeowner and taxpayer, so I'm not discounting the effects being felt at a budget level. There's better ways to improve revenue with a city than increasing parking fees. Again, there is not enough bail out money in the world to save all small businesses. Our city needs to promote visitors versus pushing them away, period. We have already seen several of our local, panel of local small businesses close their doors permanently. We don't want to see more. Please both know in order to reduce the negative effects COVID-19 has already caused our city on many levels versus negatively impacting small businesses. The second public comment is from Robert Preston, 425 South Bay Shore Drive. He puts forth several senior and senior questions. Number one, why is payroll increasing when the city has people that are not working? Number two, why are physicians like Tom Slerds, Recreation Leader for Childcare, essential employees when the city hall is on lockdown? Number three, why are we still paying Gerald O'Neil when he should have been fired while this offer was signed instead? Number four, why are people getting paid to do nothing? Put them to work in our pocket cars and maybe in the empty living hall pages, plenty of social distance there. Number five, why are our city employees not good stewards of the city? When many of our city employees, fresh workers, native personnel, inspectors, or code enforcement see contractors, homeowners, or tenants making messes of our street, inform our sheriff's or code enforcement officers that it has occurred? Number six, I am totally against raising parking fees. The city needs to fight for itself. Number seven, as the board of commissioners meeting is the second Wednesday of the month, my team of finance director gave an update, given a debate financial status for the previous month. It's all computerized and. It's all computerized and should be just push a button. If it's not capable, get someone who can. And for excuses like we have not received payment yet, we have not paid that bill yet, or that would be really difficult. Again, these are excuses, not a reason. It is not done. And our final public comment is from Reese Norman, three-six-three, Medallion Boulevard. I applaud and commend our city government for the performance, their performance in trying and difficult times. From the new mayor, to the Board of Commissioners, the City Manager, and his team of hard workers, their efforts have been exemplary. I have been critical in the past of our city's communications abilities and efforts, and improvement is still needed, but in these extremely difficult circumstances, I appreciate their efforts. People outside the Channel Six Forty operational, all concerned to take pride in a job well done. Mr. Mayor, that concludes the public comments received by email.
Okay, thank you. Comstand agenda. The Chair will adjutant motion.
I'll make the motion to approve, to approve the consent, consent agenda.
That's number one. Number two.
Commissioner, can you repeat number one, you have a volume problem?
I said, there's numerous, numerous mistakes in the, in the previous agenda matter. I'd like you to clarify and get those corrected before we approve it. Number two, for the proclamations that we, that was just read, for the very last one of the Summer of Giving, the date for that is twelve, May, two thousand and nineteen? I don't think so. You're not going to mean twelve, May, two thousand and twenty?
That's correct.
Okay, next is Interlocal Agreement with Miles County for Water Quality Monitoring.
Can we call the vote?
Okay. Sorry about that.
Commissioner Price?
Yes, but I do agree with Commissioner Dowd that we can correct any type of dates, but with those changes, I will say, yes.
Commissioner Dowd?
Commissioner Dowd?
No.
Commissioner Hodges? Yes. Vice Mayor Andrews?
Yes, with the changes, Commissioner, we've discussed.
Mayor Andrews?
Yes, with those changes.
Motion carries forward. Next is Interlocal Agreement with Miles County for Water Quality Monitoring and Assessment. Jamie?
That's not the issue.
Okay.
Please, I don't want to be.
Okay. Unfinished business. City Clerk will be ready to give. Resolution, please.
Resolution, two thousand and twenty, dash zero seven. A resolution of the City of Mid River Beach, Florida, amending the City of Mid River Beach Board of Commissioners policy handbook and providing for effective dates.
Is there any discussion on this?
If I may, Mayor. I found two very small stylistic things to change on this. Claire, I think we talked about one of them already, but I found one more, just no huge deal, but before it goes into print, page sixty-nine?
Page sixty-nine, okay.
One hundred and nine. Top of the page.
Yes, ma'am.
That first paragraph should not be a bullet point.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. The other small stylistic change is page eighty-four. About two-thirds of the way down, under Special Meetings.
Yes.
I think it would just be better, since we took off for the City Manager, that we put that for in between Mayor and majority of the Commissioner. Commission. That's all.
Okay, the Chair will tighten the motion. My head of myself. I'm the correction of the press release regarding the recent Marina Hall.
That's a separate.
Yes, a separate issue.
Wrong.
The number of resolutions.
And those.
I make a motion to pass the resolution, two thousand and twenty, dash zero seven, with the changes discussed by Commissioner Price.
City Clerk, will you help?
Vice Mayor Andrews?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges? Commissioner Dowd?
Yes.
Mayor Hendricks?
Yes.
I could hear Commissioner Dowd's move.
Commissioner Dowd, you voted yes, correct. No?
No.
No, sorry.
All right, the vote passes four to one. Okay, now, correction of the press release regarding the Marina Hall. The Chair, Chair has recognized one for a comment on this.
If I may, I think the last time we talked, I said I would start a draft of something simple that we could work with. I'm quite sure I did say that, and I didn't do it, so I will come to our next meeting with kind of a draft. Bob, the City Manager, indicated he wasn't here during that time. He doesn't know what correction to do. And since I was here, I was going to just start with something simple that we can expand on or however we want, but.
Does anybody have a copy of it? There's not even one in the.
That's insane.
Okay, yeah, I mean, we definitely need a copy of it before, I think we can put that on the workshop and go through it then, because, you know, we need to, if we're going to correct the existing press release, we certainly have a lot of us that were to correct.
Okay.
Let's do that. I just, I just think we should probably move it to the workshop.
Okay, do we have a consensus on that and just move it to the workshop?
Yes.
Okay, who is this? City Clerk, will you read the resolution, two thousand and twenty, dash eleven, please?
Resolution, two thousand and twenty, dash eleven. A resolution of the Board of Commissioners for the City of Mid River Beach, Northwest County, Florida, establishing a citywide parking fee increase through the Archibald Park, the purpose of generating additional revenue to assist in offsetting revenue loss during the coronavirus, underwriting for effective dates.
And I'll defer to the City Manager for comment, and if I'm fair, can you answer any political and bad questions? And as I mentioned before, we've been going through a lot of titles, one of them, some of our neighboring cities are looking at taking action, this particular way of improving revenue. The, I don't think we should be in a situation where we impact our local businesses. My preference, and again, it's for your discussion point, if this, you know, we can even look at these at the workshop meeting, and we'll look at the other COVID-19 options, if you'd like, but I just wanted to get it out there so you could get this feedback, your constituency, and it's your, your insurance, what you would like to do. Totally is an option, I guess, I guess, other cities are looking at, from the phone calls that we've gotten. I haven't heard that they've implemented it. I was thinking of the big bore along the beachside parking lots versus Village, because Village would have obviously an impact on the economic situation, and we're kind of contrary to what we've been trying to do, building our businesses. But, again, we're looking at it, there's, you know, some numbers as to what we could recruit. I would stress that it's temporary. I'm, I don't envision it going into the next fiscal year unless the Commission makes that decision. Again, I just want to try to keep this where we can make up some of the dollars that we've lost. There are also other alternatives that are still out there. The Congress is supposedly meeting, where they have a funding source for municipalities and the state to help us with some of those revenue losses that we had. They're traditionally not covered under FEMA, but with hurricanes and so forth, but this obviously isn't a traditional crisis that we're in. So, so it's your pleasure, it's what we like to do, as what you would like to do, we'd like to do, or we can table it to the workshop meeting as well.
Just curious about something, I believe you said this would just be on the beach side?
That's my recommendation. It's totally up to you all, but I just think, you know, the Village has been suffering because of the closures, and, you know, our residents can go to the beach with the free parking permit, it doesn't affect that. It affects the tourists that come and enjoy our beach. I realize that, but it's also, you know, if we end up in a situation where all the other cities are at, we might be all of us first here anyhow, even if we don't raise it, I don't know if people actually pay attention to parking fees when they're here visiting.
No, but we're going to have two cents a parking fee.
Correct, well, that would be my recommendation, you know, is to, again, to me, it goes against the rate of what we've been trying to do with our businesses and trying to bring them up. There might be some time in the future where we might be looking at an increase, but my personal recommendation, again, I'm not a Commissioner, I'm just giving you, with my advice, I would rather leave the Village alone, and if we do have any type of an increase, it could be a quarter, it could be fifteen cents, we definitely, we share your parking lot.
I've got some calls today, some of the versions down in John's class, and it's really unfair to do that now. And here's where we're like everybody else is.
And that's where I.
Because they're closing their businesses too, and that's why I thought we had to see a army increase, and it's really kind of unfair to have two of the cities that need to come here, and we should live in the two. I would, I would, you know, I would, I would change, I would not change the parking at all. I feel like there's other things that wouldn't necessarily, there's things we could do, but this parking increase, from the things I've heard, would not be a good one, would not.
You know, at this time, when we're trying to get people to come back to the city's at the beach, and frankly, trying to get families back out to the beach to enjoy the beach, I would rather see those parking lots fall and run over than to have five spots out there because of about fifty cents an hour. Every time raising the parking rates has come up, is, it has come up that, well, your residents just have free parking passes, so they don't have to, but that's kind of missing the point of this. We can't keep running this city on the backs of these parking meters, and it leads, again, to generating new revenue streams, because we can't keep raising it to cover for a hurricane or to cover for a tyke or to cover for a pandemic. We've got to generate new revenue streams, and raising our parking meter rates is not the way to do it, not in my opinion.
I just want to say, before we start raising parking rates, we need to tighten our belt, just like the public comment, in my opinion, so that, I never thought I would agree to this when I saw it.
You know, I'd just like to, you know, I, first off, Mrs. Davis summarized this, whatever business owner in town is thinking right now, and, you know, on this subject, I'm getting tired of hearing my own voice, but I'll repeat it one more time. I've sat up here for years, spoke about how this city needs to be operated as a business, okay, and we as a board need to be fiscally responsible and hold them accountable to that. And, you know, at the top of my mind, I've said, you know, no budget amendments unless it's critical. We shouldn't be praising professionals that miss their budget on projected projects right on her knees. We shouldn't be conducting costly systems, all this salary survey. We need to put an emphasis on enhancing existing revenue as well, actively creating revenue streams. We need to be focusing on obtaining grants, okay? We wouldn't be having these conversations, right, over thirty thousand dollars, okay? But most importantly, I've said this time and time again, and we're asking the House Commission regularly about it, you can't keep building the parking down, you can't keep building, okay? It's not a sustainable business model. We need to come up with new revenue sources. So now we plug in COVID-19, and, I mean, nobody's expecting it, and it is a pandemic, you know, we've got adjusted, but as I sit here today, you know, first of all, there's concepts every day, workshop, we're kind of doing a workshop in the middle of a meeting, but that's okay. And our two charter officers, both who asked for a five percent raise, by the way, at the end of the last commission term, are standing before us tonight and saying we should raise parking revenues, bail them out of, what would basically force that, force management at this point to salvage our fiscal year? Again, city needs to operate this business. In the real world, you know, Board of Directors approve a budget, you're expected to produce the worth desired profitability, you run the hurdles, you deal, okay? You make budget cuts, you don't go requesting budget amendments, so now you take it, bail you out every time. You figure it out, or once the quarter numbers come out, your stock drops, people lose jobs. Pretty much that simple, it's not personal, it's business, and there are consequences to it. Folks, we are a business, okay? Hundred and ten days ago, our Finance Director quoted in the Beach Beacon, "This city cannot be in any better financial shape than it is now," in quote. Really? And so, this is a business, and our job is to keep a business operationable, operational, and do what says here, stay on budget. How could we, if we were in such amazing, couldn't be better financial position a hundred and ten days ago, be telling me that the loss of a couple months' progress in revenue could drastically change our position, okay? And now what we're going to do in turn is exploit the forests, we're suffering just as much as we are, ill effects of this virus. My point, while the pandemic pandemic was unforeseen, we completely disintegrated our local business, from making small businesses in the stands to make hard choices, really hard choices, early loans, layoffs, inventing takeout systems where they're, where they don't exist before, and some, as, as Miss Davis in her, in her letter stated, have had to shut their doors and never reopen again. Our choice was realized near the phase of non-investing revenues for a period of time. Our management team decided they were going to continue to get paid, and how did you aim to work? Had closed the open building, locked city hall doors, and do your job, or once somebody made up and called essential, you would get time to handle, time to handle, to come to work and do your job. Let me stop for a second. I want to applaud our employees for volunteering to do whatever was needed. That's great, it says a lot about people who are here. I certainly don't blame that, a little bit, this falls on the management, but enough of that. If we continue to reward people for managing the city so physically irresponsible and inefficient, and look, you know, the other way, avoid the mistakes, let them do budget let them do budget amendments with that, okay, just this one last time, frankly, we're no better than the last commission, and soon we're gonna be tapping our residents on the show for a couple of years, but we're raising. Thank you.
I have a lot of no motion, we'll move on to staff reports.
Mr. Mayor, this is, sorry, there's a monthly financial report through March completed, and while we would like to keep or maintain the old format for audit purposes, a lot of us look at that because we want some of this information in the particular format along with the background information. But I did hear, so the city manager that he wanted more summary, particularly my department, so now things beater for the previous month, and how actual compared to budget. And that's kind of the new format that I presented to you, I want your feedback, if you wanna, you know, meet this up, throw it out, it's up to you. I'm just here to get what we want, but I kind of think this is a good way of getting the percentage of the budget that's spent, and also I think it's good about putting forward a format of why things were either under the 50% rate or over, but that's, just to give you some additional information, that's kind of what I wanted to do in the comment section. The only question that I have is, I, and again, I'd like direction to the board, if you want to have the previous year's information as a comparison, I can include that as well, but that's, that's not what we have in the original text. That's what we do. And by the way, we haven't closed out the month of August yet, and once we do, we're going to add to the board as well, so if you want to get a full team of that.
Do you mean April?
I mean, I'm sorry, April hasn't been closed yet, when that closes up, we'll balance that, close that out, bring that to the board for review as well. So again, I just want comments and how you don't, if you want this format, if you want to change it, or if you want to need additional information, I'm, I'm welcome to hear that in the project.
Mayor, if I may? I, I rather like the year-to-date budget monthly summary. And I guess if I had a choice of having last year's budget there, it doesn't mean, I, I don't care to have that, I'm okay with the column you have, and the explanations on this, I'm gonna have to educate myself a little bit on, for instance, the department slash fund called non depart, and or.
Yeah.
Really healthy number there for me not to know what that is.
That's our money structure, about all the departments, so most of them are like maintenance, so we have a lot of money in the maintenance, so we have, A, B, C, building and structure.
Yeah, so basically utilities, utilities and things that have an impact, improvement of this, this structure, things that are, that aren't, and should be burned by one apartment at all departments.
Okay. Now I understand why you named it that, because I'm like, why didn't we just call it?
Where we're cleaning, it almost seemed like it was a dumb call for
Wait, it looked that way to me, that's why I, I asked, okay. So these are, these are costs that all departments share, basically, okay? Thank you.
And again, the, the second page is the other funds, I think it's important to show those too.
Mm-hmm.
So I think like this, I mean, this is a city manager's, you know, idea, and I think it's something kind of right about most of you, I'm willing to use this going forward. You know, I think in summary, what this financial information through March kind of shows that, you know, we were, we were on track, how far it's gone, you know, through March, and that April, because of COVID, it's just very, just self-regulated, so.
Mr. Mayor, yeah, I, I actually, I like the report, I mean, we haven't gotten anything like this before, so it is definitely better than nothing. I would like to, these are actual numbers, correct? We just plug in numbers in here for the heck of it? Walter?
Yes, there are actual expenditures through, through the end of March.
Would everybody mind, and I don't mean to pick on Marina, but I'm going to, if you guys could turn to the fiscal year 2020 budget and year-to-date, there's no numbers on the pages, but it's about halfway through, almost three pages from the beginning.
Were you? Are you talking about something in a
Yeah, it's the, it's the memorandum that says.
Coronavirus impact?
That one, yes. So there are three pages from the back, it shows the Marina's numbers, Marina's thumb. There we go. Okay, so I'm a little alarmed here because I'm, I'm looking at some numbers, this, that second column is fiscal year through 3/31/2020, so that everybody knows, that means it's the half of the point of the year, right? Really, where the March, we weren't affected by coronavirus per se in the last few years. Our user charges for six months, $1,043, or, I'm sorry, $1,043,000, right? Normally, if you just want to do a fun math, you just times it by two and that'll give you your fiscal year projected total. That would bring our Marina to $2.1 million, a little under $2.1 million. Our projected revenue budget is $2.577. Back in fiscal year 2018, coincidentally, they were as kind of last full fiscal year, we were at $2,633, $2,633 minus $2.1 million, and we were going to be off, despite this estimate, half a million dollars in revenue. It does say our protected, our new protected revenue is $2.4 million, I don't know where that's gonna come from, because I looked at the impacted income, you know, King of the Beach, King of the Beach was last week, that would be the second half of the year. So we already had King of the Beach in November, in, in that part of the fiscal year. So that, losing the King of the Beach actually hurts us more towards that second half number, okay? This is really alarming, we paid, you know, $50,000, we're on it, we will discuss it next week, and we are watching the Marina average model, and we're just sitting here doing nothing about it. Thank you.
Commissioners, back to the, I mean, I just wanted to combine coronavirus and financial fiscal impact, and just touch upon a few things, because I knew we were talking about it at the next workshop, but I kind of wanted a consensus, is the new format through, through March that we're setting here, is there a consensus that this is the way you want of the future? And, and do you want me to add anything? I just want to get feedback and just be clear on that.
I'll be the report's line.
And, uh, commissioners, the mayor, the mayor and commissioners, the coronavirus splash and fiscal impact, we certainly wanted to get some of this to be sort of, but I was taking in some of the, we're getting a muscle, credit card charges, even up to last Friday. So we prepared this and the summary of, it's kind of a, a format where, it's kind of an income statement, but I want to really focus on loss by name, what did we actually lost, you can see it visually, and expenditure increases by fund, and so basically, the amount, the amount that I put together is a summary by fund, and if you wanted to take, for example, the, and I just wanted to make it clear, if, this is gonna be on the workshop coming up, if any of you have any questions about this, or want to meet with me, I really would like to cover that, because I really want to make sure that you're all understanding of, of what these numbers mean, and kind of the options we can see going forward. Just to take the example, the general fund, they're showing most of the, the loss from best parking revenue, $464,009, $70,000, and then wages, salaries, cleaning supplies, for the final total, okay, more than $50,000. So basically, I just wanted to give you a snapshot of, of the fund, and of each one of these funds, so that you didn't have it, and did go over, at the, at the end of this document, just wanted to touch upon some options that we can explore. The general fund, for example, we do mention the freeze that city managers put in effect around, during, and I just wanted the board to realize too, that the $59,332, which is projected as increased expenditures, that's really what we're gonna focus in providing in the documentation here in Florida. So I just wanted to, to make that clear, and in that map will be both as a receipt. So you can go through the rest of the document here, it's for your review, and like I said, any questions before the workshop? If you'd like to sit down and talk, any concerns or questions you have?
Mr. Pierce, one thing I would like to, has anyone done anything on any grants for the city?
We, we hope to look out for grants that pertain to the coronavirus, I think the city manager, myself, Karen Paulson, need all this data to, to research, to look at this, see where grants are located, so we're, we're constantly keeping out, and we're kind of hoping that, you know, due to this being emergency, you know, typically you don't get to be personal or loss revenue, it's, I'm encouraging, we're retired, we have it in the past, but we're hoping that if you guys have the impact of this, that there'll be congressional actions to free up, while the grants available, and when they do come available, we're prepared to act quickly.
Mr. Mayor, one that we've been working on, really that is the public assistance grant, and that one looks like it's gonna, the fundings available, we're just waiting on, on when we're gonna accept the application, we've already found, we've completed the application, just a matter of putting some of the, I don't touch it on it, and sending offices, I'll accept.
And Mr. Mayor, so you two, did you check the insurance company? We were fighting through that, and they indicated that some cities in this town were, so it comes for loss revenue, they have to be adjusted. And typically, the way our, our insurance reads that, unfortunately, asking for insurance and insurance, I can't recall this more.
Okay. Am I correct that we're gonna talk about this in a workshop, or, okay, okay. I, I would just, just as a heads up, Mr. Pierce, my biggest concern as I went through here was the increase in our week, salaries, wages, and benefits that seem to be a recurring theme in every fund and every department. I don't know how that gets, I don't know how the coronavirus could possibly make, unless we had people working overtime, washing things down, I don't know how that occurs. I, I would be interested in that when we do talk about this.
We, we still have employees that have evaluated, have done various increases that they earned during the year, so whether they were cured during the coronavirus or not, that could be moved.
Well, raises should be factored in at the initial budget.
It is.
Oh, then it should not therefore count the salaries, wages, and benefits on every single fund to be $6,700, $2,500, $13,000 for the sanitation fund, $4,881 billing fund. Do we have everybody, I mean, are these overtime? I don't know, I just don't know, so, I am gonna want an explanation, okay? Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I put on the, the agenda, was the fiscal report for the past three months to see.
The payroll report for three months? Okay, got it.
You'll see it in there.
Well, then you want to sneak a click on that one.
Okay, is there any more discussion on that?
Mr. Mayor, what other thing with the manager's report, if I may?
Okay, and there's something I want to go back to, that probably should be doing a reverse, but we touched on C, our underground, and the two options, and I really need an answer on that for the next VC meeting, on which way this commission would like to go. So, you know, you and I have discussed it, but maybe we need a little more discussion on that, I don't think it's proper to back up, I need to put it into person, be sure we do cover this, okay?
Well, staff recommends option two, and I'm good with that, as long as what we recently got didn't change, that was my concern, your letter today about it.
The vote that we're gonna be taking, VC, we can change on that particular vote, if the terms are changed. What we were dealing with, the mayor and I, the terms that were explained to us, and with us just finding this new information, the mayor sent out, I didn't even get a copy of it through the county, seeking clarification for it, so, you know, definitely the mayor at any time can make that modification to the vote, and right now, just between option one and two, not whether we want to go ahead, so I think the two is the better option, is the separate mediation memo has, but the mayor's the one that actually has to ask the vote for our benefit for the city, and our recommendation is, is option two, and I think that's what commission had decided when they approved the consent agenda.
Yeah.
Any other reports, request on this?
Yes, I'm sorry. I just wanted to ask about our, we have the 4th of July coming up, we have votes, in fact, one vote is $15,000, we decide $10,000 in budget, and I've been soliciting assistance from other groups, unfortunately, COVID-19 is pretty much, you know, shot down, we get another funding, I'm trying to find the, to additional funding still, but from everything I'm hearing, we're gonna be still on a slower pace than, than what's going to phase one, and I don't want to fade. Now, there is some opportunity that we can sign a contract, which would be a date that we could move, this particular vendor that I'm dealing with is, they can move six months later, which would put us around the 4th of July into that period, not the 4th of July, I'm sorry, New Year's Eve, the 4th of July to basically New Year's Eve and, and January. So it's, it is flexible to a point, or, you know, we So it's, it is flexible to a point, or, you know, if things change in October, and we wanted to do it as part of, uh, King of the Beach or something, we still could do it, but I was kind of hesitant to committing our dollars, uh, right now with the uncertainty of where the state's going.
Because even if we're in phase three at that point, that limits 250 people, which we get thousands here for fireworks, so. I don't know if we want to even.
I'm, I'm thinking that, you know, we've got to make some tough decisions. This is one of, uh, it's my feeling that we forego the Fourth of July fireworks this year. And I hate to do it, but it's money that the city doesn't have, that's just my feeling.
And are we able to take that money that we, that $10,000 that we've already budgeted for and use that elsewhere?
Yes, we just would be making amendment. So I, I know we have talked about when you do get out of this situation of doing a community event, to get everybody back together again, whether that would be this fiscal year or next, just would you carry that money over with that particular year market if you wanted to? But yes, you can do with what you want with that money.
Sounds like, if I could just comment, it sounds like that particular department, some of the departments that have had an impact.
Right. And this $10,000, we don't have to pull out of our emergency reserves or whatever, if, if it comes to that, you know? If this freeze doesn't put us on the right track, we're going to have to, we have to get the money somewhere. I guess that's what an emergency fund is for, you know?
I might deal with this, I'm pretty intimately in the past, when I was working, $10,000. The people are, when we do a fireworks show out here, it's a minimum of $30,000 to $35,000, so. That, I mean, that, it's not enough money to write, and to, and to do it up to the standards that people are expecting. And, uh, you know, the reason we put $10,000 in the budget was because we were going to get donations. This was promised to us by, you know, our administration when this all started, and then, I guess, you know, we can always lean on the COVID-19, I guess, we have the money lined up before this all breaks. So I agree with the mayor, though, I, I'd rather forego it at this point, and maybe push that money to next year, go back to doing it correctly, you know, we, we still have a discussion about last year's fireworks that we got to go through, because there's a lot of missing pieces to that, so I, I say we push it to a workshop, we have to put it on this workshop. I agree to completely disagree.
Okay, we'll move on to the next workshop.
Why don't we put it on the next workshop, and that gives us two weeks to hear from our citizens about it, and, our city manager won't be, you know, making these firework companies think like they have, they may have a deal with us, when they won't.
Maybe we'll ask the residents that want to step up and give the city a fireworks show.
We won't, we won't be able to gather for it.
That's the problem.
Phase three.
True, we just don't know.
Yeah.
So we, we can, uh, we can push it to the workshop, and, um, I would have to say it's, it's probable not going to happen this year.
Right. Yeah.
Okay, is there any more, um, reports you'd like to respond?
I've got something, Mr. Mayor, if I may. I was privileged to take a tour of the new Cambria Hotel the other day. And let me tell you something, it is awesome. I mean, it's flat out awesome. Oh, I shouldn't say this out loud, but it's almost like it doesn't even belong in the status quo. Uh, you know, it's not a beachy little hotel, it's fantastic. So I would, uh, personally like to welcome Kevin and the staff, the European family, really looking forward to getting involved with these guys. And they're going to be great members of our community, so congratulations. So then, I think they're looking to do kind of a soft opening in the next couple weeks, around Memorial Day. And then, I think he's planning a grand opening in July or so, but, yeah, I mean, I, I, oh, I mean, it's Florida, as I call it.
Oh, good, good.
Is there any, any other business you want us to discuss? Just being a firm, so.
Good job.
I'm trying to get your schedule.
You guys, the meeting was just adjourned.
I stopped in March.
Okay.
Apparently, this didn't, I think, or we saw it on the live stream.